Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call Roseburg School Board Meeting to Order, Volume Four, Number Three. We will start off by having a present allegiance. I ask that you all stand as I will lead you in the. You may be seated, and thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the review of the agenda superintendent.
Thank you, Director Johnson. We have one item that has been added to the agenda, item number three, you'll see on your agenda, which is English Learners in Oregon, and Assistant Superintendent Lee will give that report that is mandated by the Department of Education for you tonight. No action needed, but it's a report for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Communication to the board.
Not at this time, we do want to excuse Directors Cotton. I haven't seen Director Cotton yet on Zoom tonight, and also excuse Director Sherkman tonight.
Thank you. Next item in the consent agenda. As you will see, we need a motion to the consistent consent agenda minutes of the meeting from August tenth in our work session. A recommendation for employment and notices, a recognition and sub- across items, and I especially want to take note of the fine people who give gifts to the district. It is truly appreciated. I need a motion to approve. I'll second the motion of approval. Motion is second. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The director show motion carry. But next on the agenda. We, when we have a business meeting, we offer to our public, public participation. We do have a twenty minute time limit. We like each person to no lo- go no longer than two minutes. Assistant Superintendent Lee will monitor the time. We would like for you to sign your name and your address. Without it, we cannot follow up and communicate with you, so we need to have that. Everybody on the same page? No, for public participation?
I've already written my name down. You probably want to hear it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so my name is John Houston. I live at love at eleven eighty Northeast Brooklyn Avenue. That's Roseburg, Oregon nine seven four seven zero. And I'm with SOS that Save Our Schools. It's a group that's very concerned about our schools and how things have been going, and we're looking into how we can make things better. I also have a questionnaire for each board member. It's already stamped. It's already got a return address. It's not a hundred questions long. Won't take very much of your time, and we'd greatly appreciate it if you would fill it out. Let's see, I'm gonna say kudos on unmasking our kids. I really appreciate that. It's so necessary. I want to say this about the Raptor program. I would, I've been looking at it, and it seems like if you were to use this whole thing in it, in its entirety, it's very authoritarian. I mean, it's like, it, it sounds like you're sending your kids to a prison, not a school. I know kids need to be protected, but it seems like it's going too far, like I said, in its entirety. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and the next person, Bolum is a ghost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Taylor Underwood, seventeen seventy-six Northwest Beaumont. Just right, a couple blocks down here. My property is one that borders Hugh Crest Elementary. It had come to my attention that the school board is, is planning on erecting a seven foot tall chain link fence with black slats around all the properties in Q, including Hugh Crest Elementary. I learned that by a door-to-door petition, and that kind of really took me by surprise. So I called up Ed, sorry, I can't remember his last name, with security, and he, oh, hi Ed. And he explained to me the reasons why and the securities concerns that are, are around our schools, and I totally understand it. Speaking as a, as a property owner, as well as, as a future father, I'm expecting in about a month. Thank you. I totally understand the need for security. My concerns are that the seven foot tall fence has some drawbacks. One, it's not much of a deterrent. With a seven foot fence, a person can easily go over it or through it with ladder steps, stool, chair, upper body strength, or any matter of cutting implements that are found in household garage. And then after they get through the fence, then what? The fence may have bought us, you know, about a minute. But then what other deterrence are there? Some alternatives that came to my mind is instead of spending all the money for the fencing is to invest in people, and is to invest in security personnel with the district. It's my understanding that there's two people that work under Ed that help with security. I propose that that money goes towards increasing that, so that we have at least one security officer at each school, ideally two, that could be out in the field with the kids when they're at PE, that could be on the playground, keeping track of them as well as the teachers. I feel like this would be a, a good use of money in the, in, in the short term, and then we can work on a school bond measure that focuses on security and essential facility maintenance such as the HVAC systems, and maybe leave out some of the, the unnecessary bits. The turf field, for example, comes to mind. So that's just an idea. At the very least, more communication to neighbors would be very much appreciated. So we don't get floored by this because it impacts us, and at the very least, it impacts our property values and our views. I know that's not as important as school security, but it's, it's a good neighborly thing to do, to communicate with us. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, and offer some ideas. Thank you. Told me that already. Roseburg School Board, I want to introduce two very important people in our district. We have new leadership amongst both associations. Like to inter- introduce Christie Jo Bracken. She's our lead cook at RHS, and she is now the president of OSEA Association in Roseburg. You can stand up and say hi to her. And then for our license group, we have David Morocco. David's a, a language arts teacher at Joe Lane, and he's taken over as president of OGA. All right. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Absolutely.
Chair Johnson, I just need to check to make sure we don't have anybody online that would like to. If there are any participants online that would like to participate in public participation, please raise your hand at this time.
Move it a little closer.
It goes in and out.
Super.
I'm not gonna talk so much.
We have a resolution that I like to read. And I, at the end of the resolution, I would like to have a motion to approve and a second, and then a vote to approve it. Proclaim the month of September twenty twenty-two as the attendance awareness month. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three dash nine. Whereas, good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus on starting as early as kindergarten. Whereas chronic absence, missing ten percent or more of school days for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences are just two or three days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rate. Whereas, improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strength in each community. Whereas, chronic absence predicts lower third grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout. It weakens our community and our local economy. Whereas, the impact of chronic absence hits low-income students and children of color particularly hard if they don't have the resources to make up a lost time in the classroom, and are more likely to face systematic barriers to getting to school, such as unreliable transportation, lack of access to healthcare, unstable or unaffordable housing. Whereas, chronic absence exacerbates the achievement gap that separates low-income students from their peers. Since students from low-income families are both more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. Absteeism also undermines efforts to improve struggling schools since it is hard to measure improvement in the classroom instruction if the students are not in class to benefit. Whereas, schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine why they are missing school and what would help them to attend more regularly. Whereas, schools and districts must do more to track, calculate, and share the data on how many students are chronically absent so that we can deliver the right intervention to the right students. Whereas, all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence because teachers must spend time reviewing for students who miss lessons. Whereas, chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Whereas, we, the members of the Board of Directors of Douglas County School District Number Four, for instance, is Roseburg Public School, for instance, closed, hereby adopt the attendance initiative in the belief that chronic student absence can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Directors of Douglas County School District Number Four, for instance, it's Roseburg Public School, for instance, closed, further proclaim that our schools will stand with the nation in recognizing September as attended awareness month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Specifically, we will, one, make clear that improved student attendance is one of our school district's top priorities among all of our teachers and school leaders. Two, use the data to raise public awareness, establish targets and goals, track progress, and assure accountability. Three, engage parents and the community, including civic and elected leaders, local businesses, clergy members, and nonprofit organizations to help us spread the message that good attendance matters and help us come up with solutions to ensure all our children are in school as much as possible. May I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
I have a question. How are we gonna engage specific leaders, businesses? I mean, we say we're gonna do it, but how are we gonna do that? And are we gonna give information to parents? I mean, I'm not saying that if I was a junior high student and I had an assembly or something about it, I would probably never tell my parents, but they would probably want the information. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. I think following, if the board does, does approve this motion, just Chelsea and I were just visiting today about ways in which we'll engage the community and follow through on this, on this expectation of ours.
I mean, are there any ways that you were thinking of that?
No, no. I don't have, I'm not coming with solutions. I'm just asking questions.
Well, I don't have the answer, but one of the things that I think is very important is that when a child or student misses the classroom, steps are taken to find out why, what happened, what can we do to prevent it happening again? We get that data, then we can start compiling it among leaders, and then they can come with a plan that says this person misses Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, but they have a transportation problem. We can identify the problem instead of just glossing it over.
Yeah, we have some. I mean, there's, there's good evidence, and Dr. Rivers here can talk about this, but there's good evidence, and we've got others, David and others that work with kids. You know, when kids are absent, there is definitely an effort to figure out why they're absent and get them to school, and and some of these conversations are short and sweet, and some are more complex. If you've got a family dealing with difficult situations at home, and, and we've got, you know, kids that are working with DHS, and some of those are pretty braided, difficult conversations. I think we can certainly, this is a, if we think about the expectation we have to make sure kids are, are moving forward academically, being there, and being there is a life skill, right? Go ask any employer right now. Showing up is important. And oftentimes, this does, this really does require not a conversation with a kid. Oftentimes, it's a conversation with a kid and a parent, and sometimes more so even with parents at times. So I, I think though this resolution does, we have data, but this is a little different in the fact that this is about raising public awareness, working with leaders across the, across our county, clergy, business leaders to help support this. That will require additional effort for us to spearhead that. We're ready to do that. Probably could come to the next meeting with some, with how that's worked, maybe some data on who we've been able to reach out to, so.
Are there any other question? Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The director show motion carry. Next item on the agenda is the twenty-two, twenty-three strategic plan. And we could turn it over to Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Director Johnson. So board members, I appreciate the feedback we received. This is a follow-up from our last meeting and the meeting before that, and one meeting before that. As we talked about the importance of a strategic plan and how we're committed to make sure we're putting our resources into particularly the middle of this strat plan, which is really the core beliefs we have around what we want our schools to do for our children and community. So I received some feedback from directors, and I appreciate that. Appreciate Chelsea, who's helped us encapsulate this into some kind of graphic that makes sense. Where we've landed is really somewhere within these four options. These options come from recommendations from your colleagues and board members. So I would entertain some conversation tonight. You have four options at the table of adopting one of these strategic plans. Again, something Director Johnson said, and we've said previously, is strategic plans are a way in which we organize our resources to move our work forward. So that core North Star is that middle spot about what, what the board expects. Some of the outside is really the ways in which we believe we'll get there. But, and again, I think strategic plans are not always in concrete. We need to shift. The last couple years has reminded us of that need to shift and pivot. But it would be great tonight. I would encourage the board to be able to adopt this plan so we can make sure we're leveraging our resources and focus on the board of directors' expectations as we move forward in terms of what, what school means and looks like, looks like for our children. So with that, Director Johnson, I will kick it back your way to leave the discussion with the board.
Let me add, if I may, in the corporate world, we need a plan so that every day when we are focusing our resources and our people, where does this action enable or disable the plan? And everything then can be put into a motion because we have a big picture where we're trying to go. The, the little nothing bolts come later. Where you try talking about how we do things. In this particular case, some of the nothing bolts will be, will appear when we sit down and talk about the budget once a year. Some of the nothing bolts will talk about when we looking for grants to help us do certain things. But if we, but if we have the big picture, that's just what this, these four options are. If they help us put the picture in place, then we can start working out the details to make that picture happen. It's a living document, and I say that not to be sarcastic, in that as we move forward, we will see certain areas that maybe need a certain amount of, I hope I can use the word tweak, modification, just to adjust, adjust it, because un- untold events will happen. And when they do happen, we as the board and everyone else have to be on the same page how we're going to address it and how we're going to get to, to a solution, and those items have to fit the plan. Now entertain some thoughts. Director Lee?
I, I kind of, I like the idea that a strategic plan is a statement that we can be held to account on. That if we say this is our plan, and a parent comes to us and says, my kid or my group of kids is not receiving what you promised us in the plan, we have to look to the plan and look to what we're doing and see how they mesh. A lot of times, in some of these, I think of strategic plan statements as being kind of pie in the sky. We're gonna do it no matter what. That you can't, you can't enforce, and people can't argue with you very much about it. Of these four options, I like number one best because it doesn't so much promise a specific outcome as it promises what we're gonna give people in terms of care and services. And if we don't do that, then somebody can hold us to a comment.
In a similar vein, I like number four for the same reason you suggested.
Yeah, I mean, I think all of them, it's, in my opinion, at this point, it's wordsmithing. I mean, I, I think it's all wordsmithing. I think what we're saying is the same thing four different ways, which is fine, and I think if directors have. I, I think what I noticed in the exercises that we did the time before, the time before, the time before. We all, the teachers that were here, the administrators that were here, everyone that was in the room, I think we even had a student here. And we all have the same goal. We want our children cared for. We recognize that that involves caring for the whole student, that it involves more than just academic standards, that we are trying to support them so that they have the skills they need to have bright futures and become contributing members of our community. So I really am okay with any of them. I like one, I like three, I can live with four, two would be fine. I'm setting, give you a ranking. But the reality is they all just, it, it, at this point, it's down to a matter of, of words, and I'm not, I wasn't an English major, so for good reason, so. That's, I really, I'm really fine with whatever the rest of the board, if there's a consensus or words that people feel the message and the meaning is there, and that's what I care about.
I, I'm kind of agree with Charles Lee. I, I do like that what, you know, what are, well, I really like the compass with the North Star. What, what happened to, I've not seen that.
Yeah, we could. I think if we can get pinned down on this, we can, we can definitely work on some graphic design.
Okay, because that, you know, that to me really exemplified, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do, and that is our focus, is the caring for them, you know, as best we can. And part of that is the academic success that they're gonna need to thrive. And so I would, so mainly if we, if we're gonna tweak it, some of the other, the outside points or how it looks, are we mainly looking for, at this point, the middle bullet? I, I like the bottom ones, the student success, because to me that is the ultimate goal, and.
No options, three or four. She likes.
Three or four.
Ones that say student success.
Because that is, to me, that is the optimum, is that they succeed. And their experiences that can, we can do our best on that, but, you know, how everybody experiences school is, is gonna be different, and, and we as a board can't determine that. So I like the bottom, you know, as a summary topic sentence or whatever title.
If I could, I mean, let me just, I think this is intended to be a high-stakes conversation, but as, as the superintendent or CEO of the school district, I mean, one thing I think to realize here is that we will leverage our resources to meet that goal. So in, in the case that, let's just pick on a random school district that said, but it already said tonight. If we said the number one thing is to focus on the social, emotional, and academic aspects of making sure we're serving our children, what we invest in could look different than if we said our goal is graduation. Right? So I mean, I think, I think for the board to understand, we're going to put together a budget and a focus that is based on this. So I think there is some wordsmithing, and sometimes we are saying the same thing. So I think there is some wordsmithing, and sometimes we are saying the same things. But we do hold ourselves accountable for where the board wants us to be focusing. And so I think having a having something that is tangibly. Um, evident that you can have, you know, that you actually collect data on is important, not to have a mission statement that's a bumper sticker necessarily. But I do think, um, that part of this exercise is to challenge the board and all of us to think what are the outcomes we value the most? What are the expectations? And I would encourage the board to say what those are should live in the center of this document. Um, and really, I mean, uh, what what we've done with this in the past is if we look at the budget process. I want to make sure all of these areas have a budget function. And a way to measure and accountability to measure, and that's what we bring back. So that core, this core, the middle is important in setting that direction. Because again, if the board said graduations are number one thing. Then we would probably invest maybe differently than if social, emotional. Uh, welfare of our kids is the number one thing. Now, those two things aren't mutually exclusive. We understand that. But I think I think making sure that the center of where we're going. Meets the needs of what the board of directors expects is important.
All four of them. Ground on future success for the kids. All of them, but number four explicitly talk about graduation. Which is the end of the process we do with kids normally. Some kids, I'm I'm sure can drop out and do great, but we don't aim in that direction. I am nervous about. Promising. That we will. Love kids or care for kids or something like that. I've been to through too many. Disputes that seem to be people saying you don't care enough. And it's, those don't go anywhere very well. It's it's hard to measure that. So again, I tend to lean toward number one, that we're gonna give people care, support and instruction. That they need to graduate with setting the basis for for success.
End of comment. Well, I would like to. Share with you, Director Lee, I concur with option number four. There's no way we can measure the results of love. Whether it was well done or not well done. Uh, whether it was done timely, it was done uniformly without any discrimination or unequal equity. So to me, number four is out because of the word love. I like option number one. Uh, because we are committing. This district. When we say all students will receive. To do that means that we have to deliver. We have a commitment to deliver that. Uh, and they only way they can receive it is to come to the room. With a blank sheet of paper and allow us to write on their main, their brain what's going on. Uh, we can, we can measure one, we can, we can look back at it two months from now, three months from now. And measure just how well somebody has done something, so. Without any.
Can I say something, Reverend Johnson?
Yes.
My only concern about option one, and and you know that this has been something that I've advocated for since I got on the board. Is that I feel like. There is not room in the wording of one, it really puts the instruction. The word, the way that it's worded, it says, we're gonna give them the instruction they need to graduate. And we have kids that need more than just the instruction needed to graduate. Does that make sense? There's not room in there for those kids that need much more instruction than just what's needed to graduate. And I think that's why I liked three better because it says we're going to help them all thrive academically. Even our highest on the spectrum kids have a right to thrive academically. Not just have the instruction needed to graduate. So that makes sense. So that, and again, it's kind of a wordsmithing thing. But that is the only thing I don't like about it is it kind of sounds like we're aiming low, like let's just get them what they need to graduate. It's all we gotta do. Um, we wanna shoot the moon. Um, so that's, I like everything about one except. And and we may be able to mesh one and three to include that idea that. We want them to have the instruction that that they need, that meets them where they are. Um, as as Superintendent Corden likes to say. Equitable student experiences mean every kid gets a year's worth of growth. And if a kid comes in and needs a year's worth of growth, it looks vastly different from another kid, we want to make sure there's room for that in our plan. Not that I don't think graduation is important, Dr. Weber. Super important, but. There, there's room on the on the other spectrum.
If I'm, uh. Able to summarize summarize what we're saying here, we can eliminate option number four completely. So we eliminate number four. We have option number two, that is. A strong to be eliminated, that leaves us with options one and three. As would be the, uh, two candidates out of the four that should move forward. Everybody on the same page? If that be the case, then we have option one and option three. The next. Focus that I would think would be. Do we need to? Have director. Supreme could go back and change the verbiage on one and three to something that would be acceptable. And we bring it together. Um, because. We need to, we we need to start eliminating some, so there's only. Somebody still left. Then then if we have option one and option three can be, uh. Inter intertwined or married, whatever the correct word is, so that we come back with just one, or we can. Continue this debate till we get it all done.
Yes, sir. Terms of Rebecca's concern about number three and its relationship to kids that. Would benefit from more than the normal experience. I can understand that, but but the actual language of number three says. That we want kids to thrive academically as they prepare for graduation.
And future success.
Success, neither ends of the plans for successful futures. What if number one was modified to say what? Plans for their most successful futures.
Perfect. Great. You know, that's all.
That's word, that's wordsmithing.
It is wordsmithing. That's what you do. Yeah, I I think it's a, I think it's a minor thing, but. Lieutenant Corin was saying, if we're using this to drive budget decisions. Yep. I don't want tag to be like, there's no place in here for us to host a tag program. Cuz those kids need help too.
So with Director Lee.
I suggest modify.
Suggestion.
To say. Plans for their most successful futures.
Yep. With that being said, with with all of the directors present vote for number one with that modification, yes or no?
Um, and then I just still would like the the tagline or the title to be student success. Instead of equitable student experiences, because I just don't think we can. We can target experiences.
And my question is, do we need a tagline? I mean, what if, I mean, it's the statement is a tagline.
That's true, that the bullseye itself is the state is the.
Bill will make us a strong progress. Uh, I would, with with the suggestion that Director Lee put on the table, could you? Put that together?
Oh, certainly I can put it together. I mean, the question is, is the board ready for a motion or would you like to? I can get this together, can be ready for the work session on the twenty-first if you'd like. We could also ask some other graphic design options if you'd like. So I hear with direct management to postpone until next, uh, work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Well, I I'm I'm not in favor of kicking a can down the road. So if we're ready to vote, let's vote and move on.
I'd like to see it before we go on. I'd like to see it before we go on.
I would too.
We ready to vote?
No, they're saying they want to wait.
Run away, run away.
And we do have two, we do have two directors not here tonight. Maybe that's a consideration, or, uh, chair wants to.
This is very positive that we came to narrow it down from four to one. To two to one. Now we get the final draft coming back, we can go to the next meeting. Uh, that will close that that item. With the the follow-up that you will come back with option one. Word is slightly different to accommodate the things you've done. Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate that input. Next item on the agenda, we have English learners in Oregon, the annual report and assistant superintendent need. You have the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Last week, the board received an email with this report attached. It's also in your board packet. And there's a copy also available in the front office, bringing patrons who would love to review it. And ORS three, two, seven, zero, one, six directs the Oregon Department of Education to prepare an annual report on. Learner program funding and student outcomes in the state of Oregon. This report covers, um, a summary of the state progress towards meeting their. English learners' needs. Um, and objectives, so it's not specific to our district, but we are required every year. Compared with the board to review the state reports. I would like to share with you, um, some information about our English language development program and the number of students we have enrolled. And the supports we're providing for those students. And we currently have fifty students that are enrolled in our English language development program in the district. Thirty-six of those students are in elementary school and fourteen of them are in secondary, so the sixth through twelfth grade. And the vast majority of our students are in kindergarten, first and second grade. That makes up, um, almost over thirty of the students, thirty of our fifty are in kindergarten, first and second grade. And we have twenty-one languages spoken in our school district. And we currently have three English language development teachers in our district. We have two at the elementary level and one at the secondary level. And those teachers give ELD lessons to our students every day. So they're they're required to provide English language, um, support to those fifty students every day in our schools. So the two elementary teachers, um, rotate through the schools throughout the day. Um, and then our secondary teacher, she is at Jolene for a period, she's at Fremont for a period, and then she's at RHS. Support there as well. So she travels between all three of the schools. So all three of them put in some miles every day. Um, to support our students. Are there any questions regarding the report or any of the services we provide for us?
Are there, are there, um. Is it pull out when they come to?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any supports other than when that teacher's there?
We, um, we do provide supports for our teachers on the best strategies to use to purport to support our English language. Um, students, and especially at the elementary level, we do have a number of teachers who are, um. Endorsed, be able to endorse in the district, but we also are, um, ELD teachers provide strategies and ideas. To the teachers that are supporting those students.
And then where are fourteen, where are they at? Do you know, have numbers for which schools?
Um, well, I can tell you what grades there, and so currently we have two, uh. Two ninth graders, three tenth graders, one eleventh grader, three twelfth graders. These are actually last year's. Numbers, so they shifted a little bit, but at the high school, maybe we have five, um. Currently at the middle schools and split the total two schools, three, three at one school, one two, three at Fremont, two at Jolene.
And we're doing some supports for those kids or in other classes?
Yeah, um, our ELD teacher, our secondary ELD teacher works with those teachers to to provide them supports. Especially a lot of our students at the secondary level have come into us. At an older age, um, with limited English language, but they need a lot of support. Our elementary students tend to to move faster.
Well, language acquisition is a lot quicker when you're younger. Well, and I I just, I guess I'm reflecting on the time that I, I think I had thirty-eight kids in that particular class. And I'm already teaching science, which is already new vocabulary. And they brought me some kids that just getting English and I had no support. And, um, it's really hard to try to meet their needs and I was just curious if we're making sure those teachers feel like they have the tools.
Well, and we do have the advantage. So last year, um, Alicia Wisher is our, um, secondary ELD teacher. She was a Spanish teacher, um, at the high school and then came over to support our ELD program. So she's fluent in Spanish and she's taught at the secondary level as far as what those supports need to look like. So she does work directly with teachers and things.
And I would say I think this is probably an area in which we need to, we are seeing an increase and it's interesting. I think oftentimes I think. There's times in which we we stereotype kids that might be second language, right? We think are they migrant, homeless? Um, and the truth is, we've got students that are coming that are strong academically, they just don't have the English language, right? So it's meeting that need of saying, you've got a kid on grade level or maybe ahead of grade level oftentimes. Um, we there, you know, something we've talked about about the need to really focus on some. Support models, if you're gonna, if we're gonna adopt PSYOP, which is a sheltered instruction, observation protocol, if we're gonna do GLAD training. Um, and that is something that, um, we need to be thinking about, not just with our ELD teachers that are helping kids acquire English. Cuz that's critical, you're gonna need to build up a part of the language, but it's something really that all staff benefit from. Um, and so that's that, that I think continues to be a conversation in terms of our own progress toward meeting the needs of these families. And I will say too, there are some other resources. Uh, the language line comes to mind and there's some other resources for families as you think about parent teacher conferences. You know, we tend to see lower rates of the traditional parent meetings. It's just uncomfortable if you don't speak the language. So we have invested in some resources that allow parents to participate. Um, in in that, and I think we're still working toward having that participation be kind of the same level on which the English language participation is.
So what what does that look like, high school level? They're coming in with very limited English. How are they pulled out or?
They have a class period for English language development.
Okay.
At the high school, so they're receiving those supports. And then also as a portion of that class, they can bring work from the other classroom, other classes to receive support. On things that they're working on from their teacher.
And so the EL teacher would have. Fifteen kids that they're working with.
Two different periods. So she has a period for students who have higher language acquisition and she has a period for students. Who, um, have lower English acquisition, language acquisition. So they're split between two classes.
Okay.
And kind of what they're trying to do there is, uh, that there's, um. Kind of what we call BICS and CALP, you know, there are two, two acronyms. And one is that sometimes we think kids have acquired English because they can pick up those interpersonal, it's that that playground language, right? Like this kid knows English, but that academic language actually takes a while. And if you've ever traveled abroad and you've taken, let's say, a Spanish class, but then you walk into the store and you're like, well, where's the buck? No, I like, I know my beach toys pretty well, cuz I did that one unit and scored a hundred percent, but I don't know how to order, uh, you know, from the pastry, right? And we see school that way. So part of us having those ELD classes is acquiring not just the basic interpersonal. Language to just kind of survive and be able to order lunch and talk to your friends, but also really digging into the academic language. So if you're in a calculus class, you 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 have the language to be able to participate, or a science class. Um, and not all of our languages are always Spanish, right? And so you have that kind of Latin. That that tends to translate with the math and science a little more cuz that Latin root. But if you start thinking about, you know, Arabic, Hindi, Mandarin, it's it's, uh, really, it's, there's a big learning curve there. And for us as well, in helping acquire the English language.
And we have had growth in our, especially in our Mandarin speaking students coming in, so that is the population that's growing right now.
You said twenty-one languages? You said twenty-one languages?
That includes the language of love, sign language. So there's. And.
It's five of those.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Last district I worked in hundred and five languages. So, so it was, uh, so, but I think it is growing. And so having kind of that standard way we help kids have those skills built is important. And kudos to the ELD teachers who are doing a great job with that.
I'm curious that they draw a distinction between the progress toward English language proficiency. And. I can see youngsters coming out of likely a home that speaks. Uh, the, the, the language that they grew up with. And getting exposed to elementary school and making pretty good progress toward being able to talk with their friends and their teachers. And it says younger kids tend to do that faster. The older kids. I mean, I just remember, never mind my, my lack of skill in foreign languages. If a kid, I mean, do we have some kids who have been in in English proficiency for eight or nine years or?
Yes, it takes five to seven years to really get that count, that academic language. I mean, so it take, students tend to stay in ELD for five to seven years. And we do have students who stay all the way through. The goal is to to transition them out. And then they do become ever learner, like lifelong learner. So they're always going to be a second language learner. But they don't need as much support as they move forward. And so the goal is for them to exit out of those services. It just depends on what trajectory those students are on, how much language they've been exposed to. How strong they are in their, in academically, in their native language. If they're strong with their academic native language, they tend to pick up a second language much faster. So it just depends on the child and the environment they're coming from and how fast it happens. But it's typically five to seven years.
And does our budget, do we just budget just for the EEL teachers? Is that the extent of where our funding goes or curriculum?
We budget for curriculum, we budget for the teachers and then also supplies and materials needed during that time. So that's part of the teaching and learning budget. So that comes out of that way.
Let's directly reflect that all the directors had a chance to share with superintendent knee. And I personally want to thank you for a job well done. Uh, when we get reports that are informative and timely, it helps us make better decisions. Thank you very much. It is down for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Michelle. I need to be a co-host here, actually. I tried to share my screen and it didn't seem to work on me. I know, I thought it was, but I got demoted, I guess. All right, very good. Maybe you'll wish you wouldn't have made that happen minutes. We'll see. All right, well, uh, directors, appreciate the opportunity to share a couple of things with you. This evening, I'll try to make this relatively short, although I think I have nine slides for you. So, uh, several things to go over with you and happy to answer any questions you might have about these. So first of all, I wanted to say a huge kudos to all of our staff and kids and families. I want to thank the board of directors. Director Johnson and I have, uh, is the chair. He's, he's joined me in visiting every single school building. Uh, several people in this room, director Kremets, uh, Richard Larson. Also helped to welcome new staff and I appreciate the board's involvement in getting us back to school. We've had a relatively smooth start. I'll talk about some of the challenges here in just a few minutes. But it is always good to be back. It's great. We've appreciated our summer learning. That's been super, but it is great to be back with kids. Uh, here's some pictures of kiddos. We had link crew and, and we've had a really good start. Good to see smiling kids. And smiling staff and a lot of smiling parents, actually, the first week of school. So I want to give you a quick update on where we're at with enrollment. Enrollment's been really variable over the last several years of the pandemic. Stephanie sent out a, an enrollment update to you recently. And really, I would say enrollment, although we have a slight uptick in enrollment, it's pretty steady from last year. Um, we will have more up to date numbers on what we call the ten day drop. Um, uh, state law requires us to drop students within ten days if they don't, if they have not attended. So by next week, we'll be able to have a little bit more accurate number, but schools have done a great job of keeping their enrollment. Uh, updated and so you have that report for you. I will say this, we've had. A significant increase in students being active participants in after school activities. Athletics across the board, activities across the board at all levels. Um, our elementary numbers with robotics, uh, certainly the middle schools and the high school with marching band. Choir, football, cross country, soccer are up. We have made some additional hires and coaches because we're, we've been able to hire several coaches to field. Um, additional teams of say volleyball at the middle school level. And that's been an increase. We've seen an increase, which is actually great to see. So it's good to see kids participating, not just in the classroom, but outside the classroom. Want to thank staff and parents for, for allowing that to happen as well. I want to give you a quick update on where we're at with the seismic work. As you know, we applied for a grant. Um, this is, uh, we've had several grants that we've been able to acquire from the Oregon Department of Education. That are helping us get some seismic work done. Um, these, uh, this grant was a two and a half million dollar grant. To have a ready occupancy finish at Fremont. We have one waiting for Jolene as well. But here are some pictures of the new Fremont gym. If you haven't had a chance to go see it, it is beautiful. They are a little bit behind schedule. Um, but, but things are getting completed. Um, the, the basketball stanchions are up and that happened this weekend. They did work over the weekend again. The bleachers came in, I believe, yesterday and are being installed right now. We're working on some permitting for that. This project is expected to be finished up, um, the first week of October. And, uh, we've had some of the traditional, what we call procurement delays with COVID with materials and and some other things. So, um, it's looking good. Please, if you haven't had a chance to stop by there, it is a significant upgrade. Uh, we've done some work in the locker rooms, also, um, some AC work there to help with air exchange as well. So excited about that. Want to give an update on where we're at with some of the safety projects. We'll start with fencing. I appreciate the conversation about fencing tonight. Fencing's been a, uh, quite a conversation, uh, over the last couple of months, particularly. The phase one fencing has begun with quality fences doing that work. Um, if you have been out to some of our sites, you've seen the fencing that's going up to secure the building. Now, this, this is in a three-phase process. We're not working on any fencing right away behind the schools. This is securing the, the outside perimeter to start right now. So the phase one fencing, which takes Melrose, Fortune, Eastwood and Green has started. Except I would expect Eastwood to start at the end of the week. Um, we're still waiting, uh, Pacific Northwest is scheduled to begin. Uh, here in a couple of weeks into early October for Hugh Crest for Grove Sunday stuff in Winchester. Um, the vestibules, uh, we're still, there's, it's still a work in progress right now, working with SMB James. I was hoping to have, uh, as they were hoping as well, we had some, they had some issues with procurement of something that they needed on the vestibule. We're hoping that will be framed in this week. Uh, they will be taking care of the Jolene vestibule once they complete Fremont and move into the Jolene seismic project. And we're continuing to work with a local architect, Paul Bentley and our team on the design of the vestibules. Those will vary greatly by design and cost, um, depending on, uh, what the layout of the buildings are, is they're all different. Chair Johnson mentioned our visits, uh, last week to schools, like there is no, there's no standard design of our buildings. And there is no standard design of our building. So the vestibule design will look different. Uh, relative to staff training, uh, I want to thank Ed and safety team for, um, working with staffs. Uh, this month to do some training on crisis response and I love you guys. We are, we have adopted, I love you guys. Um, as our standard response protocol and that helps us respond to any emergency, whether that be in the building or outside the building. And so that work has begun. And then relative to the Raptor, uh, which was also talked about tonight, uh, Raptor, we have received the hardware, if you will. Uh, scanners, printers and some labels. And, uh, now the integration work with synergy and staff training and that integration work is happening. It does take about eight weeks to do the training. So our staff know how to use it so we can communicate with parents. Uh, we expect that to be, um, implementing by end of October. Let's talk about heat and air quality. Um, there's a lot on this slide, partly, I don't expect you to read it all. I won't read all this, but we do post this on the website. It's good for patrons to read through this. So, um, as you know, we've had, uh, some smoke. We came back to some smoke the first week of school, uh, with the fire down, down by Grants Pass. Um, depending on the shifting air, we'll see more smoke. We've been tracking AQI. Um, but the, the largest disruption to the start of the year has been the heat. Um, depending on where you work or where your child attends school, they've had a very different experience over the last couple of weeks. Our buildings are, um, hot. And, um, in talking to kids and staff over the last couple of weeks, the significant inhibitor to teaching and learning has been the heat. Now, in case you didn't know, OSHA Oregon passed a law in June, effective June of this year. That dictates a few things. Employers need to have a heat illness prevention plan. And that plan has to be implemented and when a, a heat index hits eighty, and that's a combination of temperature and humidity. The district has to have a place designated in every building where staff have access on the regular breaks to a cooldown space. This has been a bit of a challenge as, um, our, about eighty-five percent of our classrooms do not have air conditioning. So we've worked to get a place designated for that. And we, we believe that we have a space that can be used. When heat gets to a certain threshold though, depending on the level of work you do. And OSHA has a category for what they call light work, moderate work and heavy work. At that point, there is an expectation, a law that staff will need breaks. So when the heat index hits a certain threshold, we need to be able to allow staff to go to a place to cool down. Of course, you have to have, there's additional things required, water's required and, and heat fans and those kind of things to, to help move air. What is important and you need to know is it is not possible for us to comply with this law. If we hit that heat index, if we were to take, and we talked to David here, Jolene. It is, it is not possible to run the school and provide the level of expectation OSHA has. To give adults those breaks. Now, caveat is you, children will need the breaks as well, although OSHA doesn't really, I would say, care about children, but that's probably true. It's way about employers and employees. So, yeah, yeah. So I'm probably going to be in the paper tomorrow, who knows? But the truth is we have an expectation to, um, we have an expectation to our kids and our staff to be able, they should have a place where you can. You can, teaching and learning should happen in an environment where you can be comfortable and safe. That is a baseline expectation. Unfortunately, um, the, the reality of our facility situation does not allow us to do that. Friday, the forecast is expected to be somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and, and one degrees. Um, the heat index, the variability in the heat index is you, you, in this OSHA. Um, in the heat illness prevention plan that we have put together with the guidance of OSHA and their sample plans. We're likely to hit that index on Friday. So I sent a message out to staff today and to parents today. You were CC'd on that if you haven't had a chance to see it. We will likely or possibly have to cancel or modify what Friday's day looks like. If that threshold is hit. Now, there's this morality about this, which we need to think about, right? Being in a classroom where you are really, really hot and sweaty, and I've been in several the last two weeks. Where literally you can't, you not only can you not wear your coat, but you really can't even have a long sleeve shirt on. When you start putting Chromebooks and children in these classrooms, they get awfully hot. And we have classrooms that could be eighty degrees before children even get there. And so, um, it's hard to keep them cool. Um, so we all, I will make a decision tomorrow before noon on if. Um, it's just kind of like a snow day where you're kind of hedging your bet that the forecast is correct. But we may be having a modified early release on these type of days like Friday could be. Um, if I'll make that decision tomorrow, we'll, we've got, we'll have a little bit more update on what the weather looks like. We do have a spike in temperature on Friday and Saturday. But the truth of this is we're going to have to make some of these adjustments. And, uh, until we can have of a systems improvement that comes through a capital improvement. We're going to be experiencing this more often. And this new regulation really helps put, it really put a marker in the sand of this is the requirement now. It's always been the moral imperative to take care of kids and staff. But now comes the liability and the expectation that that happened for, for adults and for our kids, for that matter. So, uh, we're keeping a close eye on both air quality. Uh, we've had a better year in terms of air quality. And, um, but the heat has been a significant issue. Um, I don't know how this will be received amongst parents. I don't know how this is received amongst the community. Um, I've heard a couple of things already of, you know, I went to school and no one ever got a break for me. I think we'll hear those kind of things. But, but, um, remember this, it's an organization. Uh, well, I'll say this to start. If the heat, so we need to give people a runway. We can't just close school on a whim. Parents need to have, they need to let their employers know. They need to be ready for kids. We have transportation, food service. We've got an organization with eight hundred employees and a, and a lot of moving parts. If, but it's a risk we run on the days in which we say, we're just going to go ahead and run and hope we don't hit it. We, we have, we need to think about not just the impact on the relationship we have with our parents and our kids. Um, and what we need to provide to them, but also the, the liabilities of, um, not doing this. You know, what that means for someone who has a heat illness, uh, because we didn't follow this. And really, to be honest with you, as an organ, as an organization, it's not possible to do this. We've looked at this at every angle. What is a little tricky is, um, uh, Hugh Crest was mentioned tonight. Most of Hugh Crest is air conditioned. And so Taylor, right, so it's, that, so Taylor might be like, well, why are we closing school? Because my kid is going to be air conditioned, but the majority of our classrooms aren't. And so we have a district standard we need to apply to this. Um, similar to a, similar to a snow event where maybe on the Callahands you have lots of snow and you can't get out. And maybe on the base floor, there's not enough. This is kind of a new reality for us. Um, but, uh, I will make a decision on that tomorrow. Uh, I don't take that decision lightly. For many of our kids, schools are refuge. It's a place where they can eat. Uh, for some kids, the air quality in our schools is better than their homes. For some kids in our medically fragile classrooms, they have air conditioning and may not have air conditioning if we do cancel today. Um, but again, uh, um, we found out about this OSHA regulation. Uh, from OSHA, uh, didn't come with any consultation. I'll just say that. But the impacts of this are, um, are, this is the new, the new law there. Um, and this is a reality that many schools across Oregon and across the country are dealing with. We've seen closures in, um, the West. We've seen closures in the Midwest. We've seen closures of schools on the East Coast. And so, um, this is something that we'll make a decision. It's kind of a new, it's a new one for us. But, uh, I'll make that decision tomorrow based on the best information that we have. Okay, lastly, and then I can ask any questions. I have two more things real quick. Um, the board asked for a staffing update tonight. So I want to thank, um, HR, the ball for helping us put this together. But also for doing a great job of recruiting candidates. Um, as, uh, to date, it went, uh, at the, at, uh, the moment at which this was put together, which was. Several hours ago, um, we had, uh, we do have currently five licensed staffing positions that remain open. There are three teaching position, classroom teaching positions. We have a school psychologist opening and we do have a robing sub that's, um. Helped us particularly in the COVID times in which we've seen, um, or even, you know, you just having a robing sub just makes a lot of sense. Someone can pinch hit if we have a job that goes unfilled. We have twenty-four classified positions. Um, these range in, um, both their, uh, the amount of hours they serve students and also their responsibilities. But we have seventeen, what we call general, generally. We have seventeen, what we call general, generally speaking, instructional assistants to help. With our teaching staff and students. Three custodial positions, three food service positions and one secretarial position. That's where we currently. Sit. We've done quite a bit of hiring, as you'll notice, and your consent agenda and packets. But we have still several positions open that we're continuing to recruit for. Lastly, I do want to thank some of our unsung heroes. Our custodial staffs and our maintenance staff has done a really, really good job. They have, if you've been around our buildings, I'll say they average seventy-four years old. But they've done a great job of making these buildings really look good. If you've been to the district office lately, they. We, we, this is the last place I like to spend money, but there were some things that needed to happen here with some, some of the work they've done. They've done this across the district to really beautify and make our buildings. Places the community can be proud of. Our buildings are, these are community facilities and assets, and I just want to make sure that we say thank you to them as well. And with that, that's my report tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
The Friday. Options that have some effect on the athletic program.
Right, so it could. So there's two things in play. It is our opening home football game FYI Friday. So there's a couple of things at play there. You have, there's two, there's two kind of regulation, if you want to call them entities involved. OSAA regulates and is the governing body for athletics. And so OSAA has, they have their own. They have their own heat index and AQI. Standards. That relate to the amount of practice time kids can have, water breaks and the like. So we have that in play. We'll need to follow those. We also have the OSHA requirements because we will have employees working at that game. So this really gets down to heat index. So I think, you know, one of the things politically we have to navigate. Is I can't believe you shut school down, but you're having a football game. Where are your values? But this really gets down to the heat index. At what point can you operate? We're going to have school open as long as we can until we can't. But that decision will be, need to be made tomorrow before noon. Just so you're aware, we we have an early release schedule. It's an hour every Wednesday. It would be an hour earlier than the early release schedule, a two hour early. That would put the high school at twelve forty-five, middle schools around twelve twenty, our elementary school about one thirty. So by the time staff get buttoned up and going, that's when we've seen that. We started to see that heat index really rise at that two, two thirty, and then really start to cool down around that seven o'clock. So I anticipate we could still play the game because it's not about choosing academics over athletics or putting one ahead of the other. It's really about the heat index. And so if we can meet the, the, which I think we can in that game. Worst case scenarios, we would, you know, we've, and I've talked to a couple of people in this room a few times today. It could be, we just make some adjustments in that game, the amount of breaks that need to happen. If we're still at that heated next, maybe we will, we'll need to work through that, but I think it is possible to do both.
I just think that was a question.
Yes, they will be.
Are there any other questions, Director?
I, I think maybe just for clarification for the community or people who are interested. Because sometimes I've heard this and people have said this, why are we not installing individual air conditioning units in each of the classrooms? And I just think maybe you want to just answer that so that that's on the record. So people know that it's not like we haven't thought of that.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I I think so. Our buildings are, if we think about the systems in our buildings. So we just take, let's pick on the electrical system. It could be a mechanical system or. We, we're making as many accommodations as we can. And there's a process through ADA and some other processes we follow and we, we do what we can. But the truth is, and if we were to, if we were to purchase. Individual AC units in a classroom, two things are evident. It would help. It's still insufficient. If you think about the, the fan or the AC unit you put in an eleven hundred square foot classroom with thirty-three people, it's not sufficient. In addition, though, we don't have the power grid system to do that. The amperage required simply. For a building built nineteen forty-two, it can't handle that. So you're either going to shut the entire building down. By having a, you know, power surge and we've had grid issues, you know, here as well, but our buildings. Are barely hanging on on what we can actually plug into the wall right now. So we simply. We simply, this is what we've talked about in some of the bond work, that we need to have a capital. Investment that really looks at systems. And so the truth is, our, our buildings, quite frankly, cannot handle. Going to wherever a local store to buy an AC unit that's portable. That we simply could not plug them all in and be able to operate school. At that point, you just. It, the system would just be non-functional in most of our buildings. So again. We think about, you know, how we're going to move forward. I continue to say, we need to think about an investment that allows school kids. To come to school and participate in the learning process. And going back to some of the work and the strategic plan, I think it's important, we expect kids. To be able to have the experiences they need. And unfortunately, we're in a spot where if you were to plug an AC unit into every classroom, you couldn't give them that experience because you'd be in the dark in the morning because there would be no power on. And that's really where we sit right now with our facilities.
Are there any other comments?
Thank you very kindly, sir.
Oh, I have one more question. Sorry. So is the high school, other than the old main? Most of those rooms air conditioned?
Yeah, the high, yeah, the high school is an exception. Jill, help me out if we, if you need to, but we have, we're, we're actually making a transition from the, the old main. A transition has been made. We have six, I think, classrooms in the Commons now and four on the Votech building. And we still have some classes that we're still waiting for the portables to be delivered. There'll be six classrooms outside there. But it's, it's a building where the, I would say, actually, the majority of the classrooms are air conditioned. And I think we're probably at. Twelve, ten or twelve current classrooms that aren't, don't have air conditioning, right? Six, yeah.
Yeah. So have you felt like the staff and kids were really suffering this week?
The classroom, yes. And the ones who.
And if you're, if you're curious, I think. Well, for sure, the middle schools are miserable. I mean, they're really, really bad. I don't know if it's the way the window space or the way the fence work. I think they might be the worst, but there are some elementary classrooms that are also. Really hot. Eighty-five percent of our classrooms are, have no air conditioning. And so once you pull the high school out, you're really saying outside of the high school. And Hugh Crest, yeah, most of the kids, except our medically fragile kids, most of the kids do not have air conditioning.
Those buildings were built to code seventy years ago. When. The amount of electricity was minimal. But now you need a lot of wattage to put that much amperage down a wire. To let it go so far. If you've ever personally experienced stringing an extension cord in your backyard to run a tape recorder or DVD player. And it drops off, that's because the amperage dropped off, didn't have enough to get there. Thank you very much, Superintendent. To be no other questions, we will move next to the individual director's report. Assistant, since you were there, would you like to start first?
Yeah, I, I just was appreciative to get to meet some of the new teachers. And actually. See the, actually, I hadn't met a few of the principals of the school, so that was a good opportunity for me. I know. Director Cotton had suggested at one point that we each. Adopt a school. And I thought, well, that's an interesting idea. Are you familiar with that? That when they. Director Lee, do you remember a time when? The directors all adopted the school?
Well, we used to, we used to go to like the perfect attendance and stuff. We would all go to that, I think in our schools. As adopting. We all tended to think of ourselves as representatives of different schools.
Anyway, that was a, that was a good chance to. Extend beyond the boardroom and. And get more in touch with, put faces and names together. I also heard some good things about. The. The high school, how they're handling the, the training for the staff. That it, it was well done, that they feel like they know more what's required of them and. And how to handle the kids, you know, if entrance and exits and. And so it sounded like there's some. Some good training for the staff. They feel much more comfortable knowing, you know, that they have exactly. The backing that they need, you know, and so I was really happy to hear that.
Thank you, Director, Director Bishop.
I think. This OSHA regulations. Are just proving that a school bond is important. And I hope that people remember things like this. In May twenty twenty-three. We seem to have short memories, but still. I have three kids in Roseburg Public Schools and they said it's been great so far, so.
Director Lee?
Well, in the past, I've enjoyed attending the. The kickoff ceremonies and the, and the new teacher ceremonies and that sort of thing. I'm really kind of sorry, but. I've been hammered at work. And I have a hard time getting out at all, but. I'm glad to be able to part in that. Those are good things for us. That's all.
Thank you, Director Larson.
Have you grown up to a great years?
Director Cotton is the online or not online? He's not online and. Director Schitt Cliff is excused for tonight. My last comments are, I. Take every day humbly. It's a great honor to serve this district and serve each of you. And I always want you to know that I'm available for you. As we move forward, my focus is going to be and has been, what can we do to help the kids succeed? I thank each of you for sharing your input tonight. This will conclude our regular. Board meeting for tonight. The next board meeting will be September twenty-first at six oh one PM. Tonight meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.